Okay, we have the district mission statement. Sharon would like to read that.
Sure. The mission of the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District is to empower students to contribute to school and community by providing substantial learning experiences in a safe, trusting, and motivating environment.
Thank you. Okay, we have open for, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak out something that is not on the agenda today, you may do so now. Maybe it's too close to us.
Yeah, maybe on the floor?
Yeah, I think that's too close to us, like to the...
I don't think it's gonna reach.
Sharon, do you have... We'll show us later. Try that. Okay. Yeah, that's better. Okay, we have the consent agenda. You all have amended minutes and executive minutes in front of you.
Our consent agenda includes the regular and executive session minutes from September 27th. There was a revised version, a couple of slight changes moved to the original draft that was in the packet. We have some appointments and I'm gonna request that A, the appointment of our lacrosse club coach Eric just get removed from the consent agenda and we'll revisit it after the athletic discussion because the lacrosse program is gonna provide for us a brief presentation and that we can go back and go on that appointment, just so that it makes sense. We also have a basketball coach at the senior high school and our replacement athletic director because the athletic director, the current athletic director has resigned from the position and that is later on in the consent agenda. We have a leave of absence for an English teacher at the junior high school and by law she has requested this leave of absence to accept an administrative position in another district, so we are required to approve that and we are in the process of filling that position. I'll have a name for you for the next meeting, but it looks like we'll be taking somebody back from the recall list. We have a retirement, one of our special education teachers from the junior high school. I've already talked about the athletic director position and we have the resignation for the purpose of retirement of one of our teacher assistants. And then we have additionally the monthly bills and we have one new family that has gone through the process for a homeschool approval.
Okay, would anybody like anything pulled or do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to have item 4B-1B under the appointments pulled for later discussion.
Okay.
And A as well.
Yeah, maybe pull each of them, okay. And everybody was here last meeting, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda minus A and B.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see, so A, we're revisiting. And then B, you wanna make a motion and table that?
Okay, I'll make a motion and we table the appointment of Christopher LeBlanc until the next meeting.
Do we have a second? Okay, for discussion, so we are going to, but we have a new athletic director and we have an agreement that coaches for winter and spring sports, he should be involved in the process. So, reason being to move that to the next meeting.
So, do we...
Yeah, we can have a run it. We hope for the discussion? Everybody's good? All those in favor?
Aye.
What do you want?
From a timing perspective, so if we move it to the next meeting, next meeting is November 9th.
Yep.
When does basketball start?
Usually around... Around there.
For triads?
Yeah. The sports starts around around... But I don't really exactly, it's not always.
Yeah, no, no, but I had a feeling it would start close, so I understand we wanna have an athletic director involved in the decision, but so will we start tomorrow looking at the, we brought up this the day before season starts, but the practice...
Well, I would certainly have a conversation with the athletic director tomorrow to have a discussion about what has transpired this evening, so we're gonna work on it and get it resolved for the next meeting for sure. But we would not have this meeting agenda for sure.
Have players been contacted by anybody as far as trials?
I don't know.
No.
All right, I'm concerned that it's probably cutting really close and kids are the ones that's always out here, so just make sure enough information gets out to the parents and children. But, okay.
Is there anything here that would rise to the level of consideration of special meeting?
I guess if we needed to, depending on timing, I think we should be up here long.
I don't have the athletic calendar in front of me, so I don't know what to say. I would think that if we had...
So, you can get a form?
I can ask and let you know for sure tomorrow what the athletic director's recommendation is in terms of an appointment date and timing.
I just think that, you know, a quarter of us would be available so as to not delay the winter season and to make sure that everyone knows what's expected of them and they can plan on.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of that promotion and table that to the next meeting?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay.
So, we have an agenda.
Can I have it?
It's the new business A.
Oh, we can do that.
So, we have a presentation, we will go to the next discussion. I'm gonna put that in a second.
Do you want to mention...
Let me see who's here.
Just Chris and you know, so we table that for the next meeting, so the new athletic director can be involved, just so you know.
That will likely be too late?
We could have a special meeting.
I... No, I was, went through and reprocessed and then the committee, I mean, put forward three weeks ago, but if that's the way you wanna run it, that's fine.
We have a new athletic director and we want him to be involved in the sports coming up.
Okay, I doubt it'll be me, that'll be going forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have the builds, enclosed. Okay, correspondence, anybody have any questions on the, any of the discipline reports or the budget timeline? Good with that? Okay, we have the 16, 17 budget projection.
Is Jim in?
Yeah.
It was nice.
This is the first report of the year for the, for the anticipated projection for current operating year. It's still early in the year, a lot of moving parts, but I did wanna show the committee the change in the, in the revenue that, from the improved state aid and see where that hits in the balances and it's still early, but we're in good shape.
Any questions on the monthly status reports? Everybody's good? Can I have any subcommittee reports? Okay, we're on to new business, so the athletic funding discussion, I think we're gonna start with lacrosse.
Yes. Okay, so under athletic funding discussion, we actually have two items and the first is that we are looking at lacrosse. This is something that has been a conversation for, I'm guessing, over a year at this point. Oh, we have a lacrosse stick in the back of the chair. Great. So, we, we have identified an individual who is willing to come and be the coach for what we're looking at as a club in the first year. It is not in the budget, so that is part of tonight's conversation and our goal is to take a look at participation, interest, and so forth before we make a decision of whether or not we want to look at moving lacrosse into the inter-scholastic league sports for EWG. So, the reason why I pulled the coaches appointment is so that you have an opportunity to listen to what Eric has to say, Eric is here in the audience, and then we can revisit the appointment to the coaching position. And I can remind you that there is contract language around adding new clubs and we did follow that process, so there's no issue contractually. However, there are costs related to running a lacrosse club and Eric is going to address that issue as well from the committee. So, Eric, and whatever company you've brought?
I was gonna say, I'd like to thank quite a few people that have signed up as well as individuals that are youth lacrosse players to be future individuals. In terms of interest, just so you know, yesterday, in fact, was our first open, we actually met here after school, open signups, 21 kids, that's a full team already. We have follow-ups because there's a lot of sports, in fact, as it's kind of the last of the two, I'll have more tomorrow. I figure we'll already in full have somewhere between 25 and 30 kids who are already interested. That doesn't count seventh and eighth graders and as you can see back there up front, the youth players as well. It's here, I mean, it's here, it's one of the largest growing sports. The parents, a lot of who have been volunteering to do this for a while, reached out to me. A little background on myself, I actually did this for Pilgrim High School. Pilgrim High School had a girls program, their boys program. I ran, I was president of the Warwick Youth Athletic League for about five years and much to my dismay, as I would send kids to, that's to Tollgate and Pilgrim, they would go and find golf or tennis or something else to do because for some reason nobody wanted to go through a grade boys program. 2014, did pretty much the same approach we're trying to do here. We started as a club, fully funded essentially, what we need from the school was really just use of the fields. There is some cost associated with lining and painting the fields, just we have a home field to paint, a home field to play on, more than anything else, the rest of it. We funded including, I mean, uniforms, even referees' fees, travel costs, whatever the case may be. So, as a club, we recognize, you know, we have to cover all of those costs and we will do so and that's our commitment. I fully believe we have the interest to do it and the idea would be then for the 2017 and 2018 season going forward, we would then be an active part of the RIL. We did it at Pilgrim, Pilgrim in fact was a playoff team last year, so it's one, I've had experience with it, with the consolidation there. I figured it was much easier for me to go find another place to coach and sure enough, that people hired and reached my fun. It's a great sport, I mean, unfortunately, actually, it's funny, I think as we start with boys, the next obvious question is going to be girls lacrosse. There's a lot of kids here, they're playing with the North Kingston Youth Program right now, a large number of kids that are going to be coming up, both the boys and girls. So, you know, I mean, my focus right now is gonna be on a boys program that I can tell you, if we're really even thinking down the road a couple of years, don't be surprised if the push is like it goes across as well as boys.
Do the girls play in the same season as the boys?
Yes, they do.
Do you have throw-in teams?
Um, you, I haven't heard anything that says you can't, a girl could certainly play boys lacrosse. It is a more physical game, that's really the difference between the two. Having said that, I know a couple, in fact, prior to this and to kind of gauge interest, over the summer, I actually held a free skills clinic. I had, the parents reached out to some of the players who had never picked up a stick before, but given the opportunity to try it. We did about six, seven weeks so people could get it, in fact, 10 of the 21 that signed up were my regulars from the summer, which is great to see as well because it was commitment and they carried through with that commitment. One of them is, is female and she's quite a bulldog, I would have no issue with her playing. You know, so that really, it comes down to, the only thing that I worry about is ultimately, I mean, when all's said and done, some of the seniors you have, it is a contact sport, you're gonna get to that point, but having said that, I, you know, I firmly believe if you can play and you wanna play, play. But ultimately, they are, although they are kind of, it's kind of like boys and girls hockey, they are two different sports. Having said that, I know even here with EWG, my niece Nicole Wilber was a captain of the team, she was a girl playing boys hockey, so, you know, that's, that certainly is a wide open and not an issue for me.
Any questions?
Is there any problem with size of the field? Because I mean, I know it got, the soccer field has to be a little...
It's lit, it's almost, it's actually fits right inside a football field. It's the same width, 60 yards, it's 110 yards, so it's literally, in fact, having a football field, it's real simple to line it out, you can almost use it as a template to put most of it in. It's close to a soccer field in terms of that number, there's not a lot, it's not like a football field with an excessive amount of painting. It's an outside field, center line, two restraining lines and then two circles, so it is a simple field to paint out.
Will you remove both goalposts?
Um, they're behind, I think where the goalposts are, they're behind the end zone?
They are.
We don't, I've never had to, no, you don't, you don't ever move any of them?
Would you be lining the field before the games?
Um, well, that's, that's one that I need to find out. I mean, the game, the field would be, I mean, I would obviously want to line it well before the games. The real trick, once you line it once, to me, it's do it about every two weeks and then I would just maintain it through the season. Season generally runs from, from about an inch to the end of school and first games usually aren't until the first of April, so I would line it in the beginning of April and then about every two or three weeks, depending if the grass is growing, you just touch it from there, so.
Let me ask, because I know baseball, softball, the coaches have to line their own fields.
I've...
So, I'm just throwing that out there, you might have...
No, I got you, no, I believe you, I've lined enough fields in my life, if it happens, it happens. I've got a pair of shoes covered and white paint, it'll be perfect for that, so. It's that, that is actually the one question that we will, in terms of details for this year as a club, we'll just need to know and understand.
Okay. Do you have a question for administration, insurance?
One of the ways that we deal with that and I did at Pilgrim and I will do the same thing here, we're actually, I've actually created EWG High School as part of US Lacrosse. Just, you know, I'm a Level 2 US Lacrosse certified, I'm also a registered US Lacrosse coach. That, through Ballinger provides insurance and coverage for me. All of our players are gonna essentially register with US Lacrosse. So, we're affiliated with the school, it's gonna wear EWG, it's going to be EWG school, but in order to even make sure that that's taken care of, we're actually going to be a registered US Lacrosse team. Each kid is going to have to show proof of the US Lacrosse registration and doing so, that essentially means they will be covered individually as well as myself as a coach as well as the school. So, it's, that's again, one of the, what we do as a club team and then again, these are added expenses that are gonna be recurring, but that way at least it addresses the liability issue.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any thought, if we did bring it into the budget, how much would it cost for it to incur season?
Yeah, we ran out annual budgeted figures. The number one cost really, I guess as for most, is going to be busing fees and referee fees. Average season tends to be 14 to 16 games. Referee fees usually are $150 to $160 a game. Busing, depending on how far where you draw the game, they try to go north, south of the division for RIL, but it's still, it's $200 to $250 a game. That's your biggest expense. After that, I mean, one of the investments we're gonna be making this year obviously is gonna be uniforms, we'll be able to carry that for a while, but the uniforms we buy, I'm not going off, and we're not gonna be investing an enormous amount of money in that because we have some, we have to cover obviously this year those travel expenses, referee and the rest, so I would expect those uniforms maybe to make it a year, two years and then hopefully become JV uniforms and we invest in better uniforms going forward.
So, but is it like football where helmets and whatever else protected?
Uh, we actually, that to me would lead to the player and what I've done in the past is for the booster club, you know, to me, that's one of those ones I like to build, it's particularly helmets is the most expensive and the most critical and those are ones that I'd like to have to build up to be able to provide that, but for the most part, I think for everybody who's in this room right now, most when they do it, especially if they're coming up from you, they're coming with their own equipment, top to bottom. The only one that I like to do actually, in fact, is goalie equipment for obvious safety issues and I like to make sure usually that that's something we provide, whether it's the club, at least just the basic safety, because that's, that's the position that stands there, it takes the most.
But does RIL require certified equipment?
Yes, yes, they do.
So, you'd have to have them checked, that we have to have it?
Yes, the one you have, they do an equipment check at the beginning of each, the one that is most important, and then again, it goes back to the helmet, is Nazi certified. Usually what I do for, for players that haven't bought a helmet yet, generally I'll work with them and coordinate and do a team order for a substantial discount, but it also guarantees that the kids get exactly the helmet I want. That's why I say going forward, I mean, it's again, at Pilgrim last year, we bought a dozen helmets, team helmets that are literally just there for kids who have never picked up a stick, I wanna try it, they'll go to them a second time around or something like $20 for a stick, but they don't have paid $150 to $200 helmet, we already have to provide it for them and we know it's compliant and meets the state regulations, so that's how I see us address it going forward.
So, if we approve the club and you come back to us next year to have us assume the full responsibility, can we have that information for us? How much, Jim, you would have?
I have it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we'd already gone through draft budget, we'll, we'll work to make sure we get it fine tuned, but that's part of what we went to is actually even an annual budget and really even layering in uniforms, that'll be through every couple of year kind of thing.
Sure, okay.
Before we got to this presentation, you had several sit downs together and then conversations, so I...
Right. You have it all.
A little bit creation.
Okay.
And I hope, again, my hope is, again, it's on my first review, so I have done this before, I've done it successfully, so I'm just, so hoping you guys will approve it and we can get going now.
As a club team, is there a certain other schools or other clubs that you already know you would play? I mean, is that...
Considering as good, obviously I know the Pilgrim team, Tollgate, I know a lot of, I've been doing this for a while, I know pretty much every coach in the state. I'm gonna stay within the division, I'm gonna try to for the most part, just we have level competition. Depending on numbers, the way it's turning out, considering how much we're having in terms of numbers, we may very much have a vantage in a JV team in that case, that kind of opens up the, what we can look at in terms of different schools. The other one I can do is for a better school, say like a Bishop Hendrick, which is Division 1, we can gladly, we can play their JV team, give it one, two, where they kind of, they get it, but we get it, you know. There, there's a lot of teams out there, I mean, Mount St. Charles, I can pick up a phone call, they've got a bus, they'll drive it at any point in time, so. As a club, the downside is I, I'm the one that has to create this schedule, I'll work with the athletic director as, and make sure that we have, you know, field use and all of that associated with it. That's the toughest part really as a club. With RIL, they actually, it's not, it's not the schedule. Our aim is hopefully, we're looking for a 10 games season and we get the kids some time out on the field and get to play in the game.
All right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Jim has some field research, so I'll do it. There's no side of Jim class that could... Okay, so, yeah, motion to approve Eric as the club, I just called him.
1A on the consent agenda.
Okay. The motion of 1A.
I'll make a motion to approve item 4B-1A, Eric turns. As the lacrosse club coach for the 2016-2017 school year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're still under A on the agenda, we're gonna discuss the gymnastics that we form to this agenda. Is there anybody here who wants to ask?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
How many?
Okay, so Jim has some information on this.
So, I'm just wondering, I have spoken with the high school principal and she has indicated to me that there's been some good progress that's been made with some...
Yes, and we have acquired $2,000 this week in corporate sponsors.
$2,000 this week?
So, yes.
Wow.
Same. So, Megan Capwell will be getting a check from the transit company, the bus company. They had a check for her today, sadly, they wrote it out to Exeter West Greenwich Middle School, which is not good. So, and my daughter will be picking up a check, Joe Harrington's company, commercial card services will be giving us $1,000. I just had to work late today, but Erin will have that tomorrow. So, we have $3,200 since we came last, so an additional $3,200.
You had some fundraisers too, I...
We did, $1,200 in bake sales. We frosted a lot of cupcakes. We have a calendar raffle and they have encouraged each girl to sell 15 raffle tickets, that will be the other 1,500 that we will need. Hopefully, they can come through and each sell, we need 150 to sell 150 tickets and that will be the entire season, the entire season. So, they have done a lot in a very short period of time.
Yeah, that's fabulous.
And in the event that they don't make that 1,500, because they were supposed to do a power wash, which usually nets about $700 and it rained, so it had to be canceled and can't be rescheduled or set up, sadly, because of weather. If they don't, we will need whatever difference they have until Boosters has agreed to do Funny for Funds, they're coming to the next Booster Club meeting, they want all the unfunded, we'll have a representative from every unfunded sport at that meeting and we're working on convincing Boosters to pay the deposit because none of us have an extra $500 to secure a date. The good thing is, once you secure the date, they don't, they try not to have any more events with Funny for Funds around your day in your area, which is good, because there are three Funny for Funds events between North Kingston and EWG in November. So, it really didn't make any sense for us to schedule anything in November because everybody's already going to an event. Aim High Gymnastics is having one, so that's a large portion of the people we know, so it makes it difficult to sell tickets, it wouldn't be profitable. So, we're working with Boosters and they said that, you know, they usually don't give more than $200 per sport, but being that we're going to include everyone, that would be something that they would consider doing the deposit as a donation to the unfunded and then everybody, each team would be required to get, you know, a business sponsor, they have table sponsors for $100 so that we could cover the cost of Funny for Funds and have some profits. And it will give us till February to get good raffle items and, you know, stuff like that for a silent auction, so it can be profitable. They have had $10,000 nights with Funny for Funds with just 200 people, so everybody could definitely make up and we should not have a problem making up that 1,500 if we can't do it with this raffle. It just doesn't make sense to do it before the end of this school year.
Okay, good. Fabulous, thank you for all your hard work.
Same.
Yes, thank you.
Takes, takes a lot, but say the girls have been, they spent eight hours selling cupcakes.
Are you gonna be at the Holiday Bazaar selling calendars?
Uh, they did the calendar sadly before the bazaar, which was not my intent, but I wasn't in charge of that because that was my idea, if the bazaar was free, they are going to parent teacher conferences, they will be out in the foyer doing that and they mentioned... And any of you who'd like one, I happen to have a bunch. But they're definitely a lot closer, and with the new gym, we can pay them in installments, so even if we don't have it, Rhode Island Interscholastic did say that they could shuffle our schedule if we couldn't get a loan and wouldn't be able to pay for our home meets, that they could move them, they hate to stack all of ours at the end of the season when the girls are really good, because then other people complain that, because the home meet is where we get our points. We don't get points, we don't get points when we're away, only against the home team, so they're going to be for other schools there, we only accrue points against the home team, so they don't like to push them all to the end, but we do have to pay the judges at the meet, it goes through arbiter, I guess now, is how they're paid, so in the event that we don't have the last $500 or $600 for that last home meet, that's the only, the only real obstacle I think that we will have, and it's not a huge $4,000 obstacle that I had when I came here a couple of weeks ago.
It's amazing, it's amazing how much you guys have really, you know, fundraised and have done, it's amazing.
And thank God for those $2,000.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Tell everybody we said thank you.
I will, I will let them all know.
Great. That's A, let's see, the actual, we're first, we don't really have one very right.
I just have a date.
My color is a moment.
Yeah, this is, this is the final, final draft, we were just weighing on from one person, so.
Just to compare, what were I have his last two?
We were seven students above.
Do you have students?
Seventeen, 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 fourteen last year.
Do you know the percentage?
Oh, the percentage, I'll pull that up right now.
Oh, good.
It's a very, very small shift, which...
Yeah. Yeah, it's not so much the difference between the two, it's the difference between the years, that's the big, so. Last year was 48.02 for Exeter, 51.98 for West Greenwich.
But that means that West Greenwich has gained.
Mm-hmm.
And Exeter has lost, which is, so that'll be a very pleasant piece of information for Exeter, because that was, that was our biggest concern last year, biggest hurdle.
So this is still a draft?
The final.
That's it. That's the one, yeah.
I mean, it will go to the towns and will, you know, they certify.
It'll certify, yeah, it looks, we've definitely come a long way in perhaps, you know, getting those numbers tighter, quicker.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a proper presentation.
Okay, so the presentation, I believe, is in your packet, and there's quite a few slides, but I'm not going to read through all of them. Some of the information is repetitive, so it's the same information as what we shared last year, but this should give a really brief overview of where we stand as a result of the last round of the State Assessment Program. So a lot of this section can read, but this kind of tells us about the information that becomes available to us as we trends, areas of strength, areas of need, things that we need to do going forward, and it helps us to measure progress over time. There are also a group of subclaims, so it's more than just a math score or an ELA score, there are some subclaims that we can look at to see where the strengths and needs are at a more granular level, and I'll show you what those are when we get to one of the slides coming up soon. We have the opportunity to look at student growth over time. Student growth percentile is something that's been around since MECAP, since actually the new evaluation system came out for educators, we've been working on that for, I want to say five years now, at least five years. So that's something that was calculated even when MECAP was in place, but again, this is another opportunity for us to take a look at how students perform relative to their like peers from Rhode Island, meaning that kids are grouped from across the state, not just within the school, but that have a similar history, similar assessment history. So all of your kids that score at the highest level and fit a particular profile across the state are in a grouping, and then we can measure student growth relative to their like peers, that's the student growth percentage that we look at, so another indicator for us. In terms of overall results and participation, ELA, 38% in the state meeting expectations compared to 46% in Exeter West Greenwich, and in math, 30% of students statewide, this is at all grade levels, testing is from three to three through 10-ish, because the students take the test in Algebra I and Geometry, or they took the test in Algebra I and Geometry last year, and some students take Algebra at different grade levels, so it's roughly third through 10th, but there are the stragglers who take an off-grade level math test because of whatever course they're in. So we, we had 53% of our students, three through 10, who met the expectations, we get the 30% in the state. And then in terms of participation, the state participation was 96% this year, it was 90% the previous year, and in EWG, we had 97% participation in ELA, 98% in math, which is 14% higher in both subjects from the previous year. To look at the participation rates at each school, basically, we had 100% participation in both subject areas at the junior and senior high school, we did have students who did not take the test at Metcalf in both math and ELA. So these are the performance levels, level one through level five, did not meet, partially approached, so again, the connection to the report card that you saw Metcalf present to this committee earlier in, towards the end of last year, I believe. In addition, we can take a look at students' scaled scores, this is, this is really a good piece of information, because while a student might stay in a particular level, we can look at their scaled scores to see if there's a change over time, even if they might have stayed in the same level. I will say that we cannot compare a scaled score from grade three to a scaled score in grade four, because those scales are slightly different, but we can at least look at what the average scaled score is at a particular grade level, compare grade level to grade level, same grade level over time, to see if there are improvements. And then we have information about the subclaims, one of the reports that you'll see has that information. Okay, what's additional on this slide is the variability in student performance, so we had, this is ELA, and 43% of the students at Metcalf were proficient, the junior high school's 59% proficiency, which is the highest in the district, and then at the high school, we had 36% proficiency, and grade 10 was significantly lower this year than it was in the past, in the past year, we will get to that in a moment. Then you have several graphs that kind of portray the same information, you can see what percentage of students fell into each category at each grade level, and you can compare from the first year to the second year, first year of implementation to the second year of implementation. I will just say that you need to be really careful about reading this, because this is comparing grade six students in 2015 to grade six students in 2016, it's not the same kids, so you, you can't make the same comparisons as we, as if we did cohort groups. So the sixth grade students in '15 compared to the seventh grade students in '16, that's a fair comparison. So if we look at that, in 2015 in grade six, for example, 41% of the children were at the proficient levels of four and five. If we look at 2016 in grade seven, we had 16% move into the highest level, 39% at level four, for a total of 55. So the jump in the same cohort was from 41% proficient to 55% proficient from grade six to grade seven. That's a much fairer comparison, because you're comparing the same group of kids and their performance over time. So I picked a good one to look at, but there are others that show the opposite trend, and that's something that we need to look at a little bit more closely. Here are the subclaims for reading and writing, and this breaks down information for us to specific skills in terms of reading literary text, in terms of reading informational text, in terms of vocabulary, and then under the writing subclaims, expression and language conventions. So the way to read this is that the gray, the gray area represents the students who are at the met or exceeded expectations mark, and you can see in literary text, Exeter West Greenwich is at 50% proficient compared to, it looks like 39%, is that 39 grade? 39 at the state level, 37% at the state level in informational text compared to 47% for EWG, so on and so forth. In every one of the subclaims, we are significantly higher than the state average, so we're higher than the state average in overall performance, but also at the individual subclaim areas. Obviously, we still have work to do, but it is always nice to look at our performance compared to the state average. Okay? And then we have the same information relative to math, I will say that the math scores have continued to be stellar in Exeter West Greenwich across the board, so statewide, 30% met proficiency, some of the schools were as low as 1.2% proficient, and then we had some schools as high as 84.8% proficient. Okay, we do not have any eighth graders who take Algebra, the Algebra assessment, because our Algebra student, our eighth grade Algebra class is Algebra Linear, and they take the Algebra assessment after they do Algebra Quadrant, which we do in the ninth grade. So there are some, if you look at eighth grade scores, it's not of equal comparison, because there are a lot of schools that, that have their top students that are pulled out and they take the Algebra assessment. For us, all of our students take the eighth grade assessment, because none of them have finished the full Algebra course. So 53% in EWG, 60% proficient at Metcalf, that's a pretty significant jump from the year before, lots of work going on at that school in math, junior high school at 45%, senior high at 47%, our highest grade level was grade five, almost 70% of the students were proficient in mathematics. We, so traditionally for us, ELA in the past has been our higher score, and now for the second year in a row, it looks like our math scores are inching ahead of the ELA scores.
And that's for all the teachers who are retired.
I know. So, Metcalf was the fourth ranked public elementary school in terms of math scores in the state, the junior high school ranked eighth, and our senior high school ranked in the top three for the second year in a row in overall math performance, based on proficiency levels. Again, this is comparing public, elementary, public juniors and public seniors, okay? Same information here, so that you can look at the 2015 to 16 comparison. Again, the way that this is broken down is that you can look at fifth, third grade scores in 2015, third grade scores in 2016, but if you wanted to make comparisons of similar cohorts, you look at the 15 score, let's take grade three, so the 15 score in grade three was that we had 61% of the children who were proficient or better. Now in 2016, those students are in grade four, and we had 64% proficient or better. So that's, again, similar cohorts, and that sometimes provides much better information than just looking at different cohorts in the same grade level, okay? Algebra and geometry, this is the same information. In 2015, we had 61% proficient, and in 2016, we had only 49% proficient, different cohort of students, and then geometry, 48 to 41, again, different cohort of students, but we're going to, I want to have a conversation about that in a moment. Same information about subclaims, the subclaims in math have to do with major content, supporting content, mathematical reasoning in modeling and application. Same trend, significantly higher in Exeter West Greenwich in terms of proficiency levels than our state average, and that's across all subclaim areas. Okay, this is just something that you can look over, but it's really around what we do with this information, how can it be beneficial to families, to teachers, to schools, and to districts? And in terms of our next steps, we will continue to analyze the state data, we are continuing with curriculum alignment, that's a long-term process that we continue to improve, and that is the bulk of Dr. O'Hearn's work in our district. We are continuing to look at aligned resources, we've identified, for example, math resources for the first time connected to Common Core standards, that's something that our teachers have been looking for for quite some time. That is in place for our elementary schools, and because of some budget shifting, we were able to provide it also at the junior high school this year. Obviously, we're looking at instructional practices, assessment opportunities, we have had a lot of conversation around assessment practices, that's tied into our new report card system that we have, you saw the presentation from Metcalf, we have some adjustments to the report card at the junior and senior high school that we're pretty excited about. And then in my report, if you had a chance to read my report, I talked about the pilot that we've been approved for, for student learning objectives, that's part of the educator evaluation system. We went to ride and said, here's what we'd like to do, this is what would work better for our district, and we got final approval for that pilot, and the focus is on the learning process, not on the beginning of the year, end of year results. So we have a lot of teachers that have opted to go that route, and the conversations are really exciting. So, did I do it all for you?
You did.
How fast was that? It felt fast. So, you have the packet, I think there's a correction that, do you have a correction? It's one of the slides, right?
In the district mathematics, we have a state 33. Did you want to pass around?
Oh, I did have one, everything.
And just for the positive, and you're going to talk about wire down.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, I knew that I had to talk about that. So we have, we have some conversations to have at the high school, because one of the things that has really, that changed a lot from the previous year to this year is that students did not take this seriously in our high school. They, they did not take it seriously. A lot of the students, particularly in ELA, were finished in a minute or two, it's impossible to do the test in a minute or two, and, but all of those students' scores are cashew. So if we want the information to really give us an accurate picture of the performance level of...
And you're going to talk about why it went down.
Yeah, that's what I knew, that I had to talk about that. So we have some conversations to have at the high school, because one of the things that has really, that changed a lot from the previous year to this year, is that students did not take this seriously in our high school. They did not take it seriously. A lot of the students, particularly at ELA, were finished in a minute or two. It's impossible to do the test in a minute or two, and, but all of those students' scores are captured. So if we want the information to really give us an accurate picture of the performance level of our students in our school, then we really have to think hard about how students are testing, and how do we address the fact that a lot of them are not taking it seriously? I know that I have reported already that the, there has been a change at the state level. So we have, in the past, we've tested students in grades nine and ten ELA, and then in Algebra I and Geometry, that was a requirement. The new regulations say one math and one ELA at the high school level only, so the PARC testing has been cut in half. And that means the bulk of our students will complete the ELA nine and the Algebra I in the ninth grade, and the only upperclassmen that will have to take any test at all will be those students who have not yet gotten to the second half of the Algebra course, and so they may have to test in grade ten or eleven, if that's appropriate for that. We are still kind of in that gap between when tests are supposed to be used for graduation requirement, and when the, or when they're not supposed to be used, and when they are supposed to be used. That's still there, although we know that the commissioner has been pretty clear that he is probably going to not have the state testing as part of the graduation. So we'll see what happens with that as well.
I actually think that Halsman came up today.
Oh, so I didn't read it yet, because I've been in meetings all day, but I figured it was coming soon.
Yeah, I read it this, I read it in lunch.
Karma eighth grade. So that makes it, again, very difficult for us to have conversations about the seriousness with which our kids take the test, but we have to administer it. It does provide good information to us. We're getting a lot of great information at the elementary school. We know our kids are taking it really seriously, and we're using the results to make some pretty significant improvements, and we're seeing improvements across the board, not just on the state test, but in terms of day-to-day performance. So there's a lot of exciting things. It's hard to draw conclusions at the high school, however, because, for example, the tenth grade results are fifty percent lower than they were last year. Well, that is more than statistically significant.
This is a wide state, though, you have to understand, where you have the same problem.
Yeah, it's in a lot of places.
At the high school, I mean, I think, if I can make a suggestion, I do think that the more they hear about it, and the more it's like pounded into them, and letters and emails, I think that the less deal made out of it is better.
But the high school, you don't get?
At the high school.
You don't, I don't, you don't get, I don't think you get all that.
There was a lot last year. We got a lot of emails, a lot of letters.
At the elementary, at the elementary.
Everywhere.
I think at the high school, a lot of them, we get it though.
I think also cutting down on the testing instead of four times, that's a very huge thing. Because, I mean, just seeing all the wasted time that could go towards teaching as opposed to testing is huge. And the kids are feeling distressed over testing, of course the teachers are, you know. So I think that's what makes it worse.
They do other activities, they do sports.
So, I mean, we recognize all of that, but here's the thing. While it may not be part of the kid's graduation requirement, it still is connected to things like accountability reading. It still gets factored into things like the school rankings that you see in Rhode Island Monthly. It still gets connected to these other reports, and it doesn't look flattering. So for the first time, I have the accountability scores for our district. We do not have any schools that are in the commended category. That's the first time that the high school is not in the highest category. We, in order to be in the commended category, you have to have a scaled score of ninety or better. We are at eighty. So it's the first time that we've not hit that mark. And a big component is what we just looked at, particularly in ELA, because our math scores are pretty solid. I mean, I know they went down, but they're very solid in comparison. And the math test was first, and the ELA test was second, so the kids are tired, and there's a lot of reasons. But I will say that our junior high school has consistently been going up in terms of their scaled score. They're also at eighty, so they've never been that high. And Metcalfe, so the year I got here, Metcalfe was at the typical range and almost below typical. Their scaled score is now eighty. So we have three schools, they're all eighty, and I don't know that there's another school that has eighty in the state, but we have three schools in our district that are, that their raw score is eighty. So we're seeing huge improvements in a lot of areas at elementary. We have a concern at the high school, but that concern is not necessarily connected to the curriculum, to the quality of our teachers, to the proficient, the actual proficiency of our students. So how do we balance those two?
If we look at incentives to help these children be motivated, food is a great incentive for teenagers.
And we actually had some incentives. Barbara was sharing that with me.
Yeah, we used to do a lot better, because the, we had built in these great incentives that, because the kids took the kneecap that was in the eleventh grade, and if they were proficient or, you know, did well, they could get out of their senior final exams. And that got every kid, I mean, we were scoring like crazy, and now those little ninth and tenth grades, you're like, they don't care, you know? Like, we still have some of those incentives, but it's too far a goal for them, so we have to figure out a way to make them care about something they just don't really inherently care about. I hope food will work. That's an easy one. I don't know that that's going to work. They'll be like, thanks for the food, but, you know, I'm still just going to like put my name here and walk away. I don't know. We've got to make them care about something they don't care about.
Right, right.
It's hard.
Well, it starts with the families, you know, it starts with the families, obviously.
I mean, it's unfortunate, because the kids this year applying to college are, they're not going to, they're not graduating from a commended high school.
How the colleges do.
And I don't hear anybody, they look at everything, especially Rhode Island. They do, they do. It's one, I think it's, I personally think it's one factor that our kids are losing out on, that you're not graduating from a commended high school in Rhode Island. Because Rhode Island is not up there on the top of the educational hierarchy of the state. I mean, when colleges are looking at these kids, all the information that these kids are submitting, it helps in Rhode Island if you graduate from a commended high school. I don't know. I know my kids in ninth grade, if you told them that wasn't in the profile, then they take it seriously, because they're applying to college. So I think that's an unfortunate thing, that that's happening this year.
Besides the optics of the change in that category, what are the consequences to the district?
There aren't any immediate consequences, because our scaled score still puts us in a good place, but we certainly do not want to look at a trend of decline.
Well, the consequences would be if participation rates went below, correct?
If the participation rates went below, then there are other, there are other warnings that get attached to your accountability rating ranking, because the accountability system has changed for this year. It's if you get below typical that there's things that are attached. We're not there, but we certainly do not want to continue that downward trend. So how do we, how do we reverse it? Again, I do believe that based on the quality of our students, the quality of our program, the quality of our staff, that the scores that we looked at is not an accurate representation, and therefore, any score that we get, any ranking that we get is not an accurate representation. However, if it continues to decline to the point where we start getting warning, warning symbols attached to our rating, then regardless of what I know to be true, that's the reality. So we need to pay attention to that.
Then he asked if you're for the high school, do they look at, do they look at that?
They'll look at everything. I'm sure that will trigger some questions, particularly when they look at why such a huge disparity between performance level from the previous year and the performance level this year.
Can I ask one more question about the math? So kids that took this PARC test, if they were not taking math at that time?
They didn't take math, no. So they only take math when, let's look at last year. It was only, they were only tested in Algebra I and Geometry, and they only tested when they were in the Algebra I quad class or the geometry class.
Okay, so they were actually given an instruction while they, okay.
Yes. That was one of the big changes from the way that the testing used to be done with DCA. That was connected directly to the course that they're in.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Everybody else up? Okay, anything on the Reserve Capital Project update?
I'll just give an update to the group. I swung by Lion today. They're doing great work over there. It's really starting to take shape, the placescape that they're developing on the embankment there is looking really sharp. They excavated all the blacktop and the designated areas, and they've started to apply the gravel base, so that looks good. That's moving along. The, so they're on track. They should be finished, they're scheduled for mid-November to complete over at Lion. The emergency generator project at the junior, senior high school in Walloam. We had a meeting, a contractors' meeting on October thirteenth at ten a.m., and the contractor came back with his site team, which will be doing the excavation and the detail work there for us. They're targeting, this week, dig site was to come out and lay out all the areas where they could, you know, just to verify that they could dig, and they're scheduling work to begin on Monday, the twenty-fourth. Start excavating from the pad. The location of the generator will be, if you're at the high school, on the juniors' side at the loading dock. They actually have the footprint, this is fully marked here. They feel that the footprint of the generator will now be able to go all the way up onto the grass there and cut the curb there, so it will give us more room there.
It opens good.
And then they'll put the bollard in around that. They're starting, they're going to start that work on the twenty-fourth. Their team is going to put in the duck bank and conduit, so that work will be done. They'll close that back up, concrete encased and backfill. So they should be all set with the majority of the site work for the generator, for the, what's the box, the Elliot box, and that will be good. And then on Saturday, they hope to get in, on the twenty-ninth, they hope to get in at Walloam and start that excavation there, which is basically a saw cut across, so, but the real, this is, this is the money quote. So the two generators and the ATS, the transfer switch for Walloam, are going to arrive, scheduled to arrive at the same time, and that should be sometime in, you know, late November, early December, and then it's just a matter of waiting. The Achilles heel is the transfer switch for the junior, senior high. That is not going to be ready until January.
That's a big switch.
Yeah, it's a big switch. And they don't have these. These aren't things you pull off the shelf.
What kinds of ones?
But I felt really confident in the meeting that they could get that generator over more. These guys really seem like they're covering their bases. There's just not a lot to report right now until we get to it. That's the update.
How about the well?
The, it's all set. Yep. They've, they came, they were here yesterday. Steve was with them until late, but they, they had to drop the, it was the pump, I think?
It was the pump on the well, on the, at the bottom of the well.
Three hundred and fifty feet down, but they had to pull it up, tad, drop. And then they, Steve came in at five this morning to go through, just flushing out, because they had to bleach the pipes and everything. So everything was running back at a normal rate. We still have one thing that needs to be corrected in the inside room, but there were some parts that needed to be ordered, very minor, and the plan is that, I wanted to say, I think I talked to him today, and they're going to be back on campus tomorrow, and it'll be completely resolved tomorrow, but it was within that range that I had given you at the, in the update.
Thank you. Does that go right back online, or does the health department have to test the water?
Steve has to, he has to make notification to the health department that this is what happened, this is what.
Once it gets flushed with the bleach, I'm assuming that we are going to, we're going to get the water tested.
Oh, yeah, we're still doing our normal testing session.
Okay, good. Okay.
But we had no loss of instructional time. And I was not feeling that that was going to happen at one point yesterday morning. All good.
Good. Okay, we have four meetings. We have Wednesday, November ninth, school committee, Tuesday, November twenty-second, school committee, and Tuesday, December thirteenth, school committee. And we do need to go into executive session tonight. Under A. Make that motion.